All right. Good evening. Today is Monday, January 3rd, 2022. This is a special meeting and a workshop for the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to call a meeting to order? Cynthia, second. Laura, all in favor? Okay. First item is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year.
This is a workshop, so we'll just dive right into the topic for tonight, which is Integrated Co-Teach, the Takahoe Way.
Right. So I just want to introduce Dr. Kate Sweeney. She is our new Director of Special Education. We're so excited to have her. And tonight, she is going to talk about Integrated Co-Teaching, the Takahoe Way. Sorry, last year that no schoolteachers were trained in co-teaching the different models. And Dr. Sweeney took it up to start really focusing on two very specific models, K to four. And she's going to be presenting on that tonight.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. Good evening, parents, students, anyone who's watching from home and those of you present today. My name is Dr. Kate Sweeney, and I am the Director here of Special Education and Student Services, as Dr. Goodman introduced me. And today, we're going to be talking about one of the models of special education that we have in Takahoe called Integrated Co-Teaching. I want to first begin by reminding us all of, you know, the district strategic plan that you have in place, because everything we do really should be in alignment with things that we have set forth. And why are we here? What are our goals? And what do we hope for our students when they leave our doors? Our mission: preparing all students for excellence. And how do we get there through our strategic plan? By focusing on those four pillars: social and emotional learning, diverse needs of learners, contemporary teaching and learning, and professional learning. Those four things are the targets, should be the targets for our strategic plan and help us to get to where we are preparing all of our students for excellence. What I'd like to say is that in the Special Education Department, we've done a lot of work in a very short time. And what I'd like to add to that in terms of a mission and a vision is that in special education, I'd like to say that we're as typical as possible, as special as necessary. And what that means is that I want our teachers to be able to deliver the research-based instruction to make sure we're targeting skills for all of our learners so they can get their needs met as special delivery as possible, but also making sure that they are typical and they feel welcome and accepted in their home community. Contemporary learning, this is what we all know from the research and from best practices. Contemporary learning that best supports the diverse needs of learners while supporting social, emotional needs of all occurs when students are educated in an effective, least restrictive environment. You might have heard of that term, LRE, Least Restrictive Environment. And that means, to the greatest degree possible, we want our students learning alongside their typical peers. I've put on the display here what this is, is our least restrictive model for special education, how it works from students being in regular class. And then, as you go up the continuum, those are more and more restrictive educational programs that we provide to our students. And you will see, going from regular class, regular class with related services, consultant teacher, you'll see ICT, Integrated Co-Teaching nestled right in there in that green section. A robust special education program, we need to remember, also includes special class programs and, when necessary, at a district, home hospital, and residential. But that's where ICT is focused, and that's where I'll be talking about today. So Integrated Co-Teaching. The traditional definition, it's a model of service delivery where students with and without disabilities are educated alongside each other. What I'd like to add is in Takahoe, it's not only about students learning alongside each other, but it really is our commitment to developing inclusive teaching practices so that every learner in the classroom, regardless of their strengths or vulnerabilities, is seen, heard, understood, and guided to excellence. So why do we do Integrated Co-Teaching? Well, take a look at that cartoon there. The person in the wheelchair is saying, "Could you please shovel the ramp?" And the guy shoveling the stairs is saying, "But all these other kids use the stairs. When I get through shoveling them off, then I'll clear the ramp for you." And he simply states, "But if you shovel the ramp, we can all get in." And that is a representation of why we do ICT. So I have a little video here for you, kind of a peek inside some of our classrooms.
At William E. Cottle, the implementation of the Integrated Co-Teach model in grades K through 4 has been smooth, and teachers and students alike have found the co-teach support to be very beneficial. In our co-teach classrooms, a general education teacher and a special education teacher work together to create models of instruction in which all levels of students are supported for the majority of the school day. In addition, at designated times, usually during our win period, in alignment with any student's IEP, the special education teacher will pull out small numbers of special education students for additional support in specific subjects such as reading, mathematics, writing, or executive skill building.
Co-teaching has enabled us for so many more opportunities for differentiating our instruction. For example, we are able to challenge students with enrichment and extension activities as well as reinforce concepts for those who need extra support, time, and practice. With this model, students inevitably receive a much greater degree of individualized attention. All students benefit from this model, regardless of their level.
This lesson was a foundations lesson that incorporates specific spelling options for suffixes. We decided to first begin the lesson with our drills in a whole group setting. Then, we broke into two groups to parallel teach so that our students would not only get more individualized instruction, but to embed IEP goals into the curriculum. In addition, parallel teaching provides informal assessment opportunity.
What you saw in our room today was the combination of parallel and station teaching during our math lesson. We are able to teach the same lesson in a small group setting while other students are working on building skills that meet their needs. Students in station teaching are responsible for their own learning, and they're aware of what they need to work on. Some of them are working on their Chromebooks to do iReady math, Boom cards, or other skills we've worked on during the day, while students who are also doing hands-on activities, such as review sheets to review and reinforce lessons learned and other hands-on activities.
By now, the routine is so instilled that the students know how to rotate. We use the math acronym, M, Meet with Ms. Volpe, A, At Your Seat, T, Teacher Time with Ms. Lanero, and H, Hands-on Work, and the students' numbers so that they know how the rotation will occur. Groups are fluid throughout the year.
We feel the Integrated Co-Teach support that has been implemented at Cottle is the most outstanding model because it offers our students the best in both instruction and inclusion. The model is designed to help all students achieve academic, social, and emotional inclusion, plus provide targeted extra support in order to develop critical skills such as organizational ability.
So in terms of Integrated Co-Teach, we do have that at the middle school as well. It's been here for a few years. However, this year, it was new at Cottle. So what I'll be talking about and why I included Cottle was because the focus of the professional development has been building up those practices at Cottle. And specifically, what I'll describe to you, the six models of co-teach. While I see a lot of that in my classrooms at the elementary and middle school, the two that we really wanted to focus on were parallel teaching and station teaching. You saw a little bit of that in the videos. And I'm going to go through that a little bit more in detail and describe to you why they're so key and why Mr. Marash and I and our expert consultant decided to really focus on those models to truly support all of our learners and to go after those skills. So in the co-teach models, there are six different models. And the theory is that with two teachers in the room, you have curriculum, and you have students with different skills and abilities. So with every learning objective of the day, the co-teach pair decides which model is most conducive to supporting those learning needs and getting those learning needs met. One teach, one observe is excellent when you're focusing on a student, for example, who's working on a behavior plan or you really need a teacher to be observing and tracking data. One teach, one support is excellent when you have a teacher who needs to have a whole group instruction and one other teacher supporting for comprehension and other visual checks. Parallel teaching, I'll describe that later. Station teaching, I'll describe that later. Team teaching is used often. That's when the teacher is presenting a whole lesson to students, and the special education teacher will pull aside a few students and work on those skills individually. And then, alternative teaching is similar to that. It's just that when the teacher is teaching, the special education teacher is presenting something different in skill development. So now, let's dive deeper into the two models. So, parallel teaching. In parallel teaching, the two teachers, the general ed and the special education teacher, co-plan the lesson and divide this class into two heterogeneous groups, mixed levels. The learning and social needs can be best met because, as you see, you divide the students. So the student-to-teacher ratio, it becomes much more conducive to effective teaching. So, kind of dissecting a little bit of what you saw here. So in this lesson, they started with the whole group instruction. And then, the special education teacher had her learners in the back. And mind you, it looks a little different because of social distancing and the COVID practices. So the students are spaced apart. But there are two groups in there. One group of students is working with the general ed students, and that group of students is focused in the back. And what's excellent about the parallel teaching model is that there's a smaller, as I said, student-to-teacher ratio, more individualized instruction. There's a more immediate feedback to support advanced learning. And it's much more easier to do your assessment. You have formative assessments that you can do on the spot. Does a student understand? How do you know when a student knows what you're trying to teach? When you have a group of eight versus 20, you're much more able to do that and modify your instruction to make sure they know it. And if they know it, modify your instruction so you can advance their critical thinking. In addition, students are more engaged because the response time is greater. It's more difficult to be a fly on the wall when there's eight of you versus when there's 20. And teachers can be more efficient. When there's fewer students, teachers can move through lessons more efficiently because they can target the students' needs and they can also challenge them and keep them engaged. So I'd like to provide you an example in addition to what we saw in the video clip. Because I don't know about you, but I like to see examples of things, concrete examples of things to bring it to life. So, okay. ELA, Poetry in a 5th grade classroom. So, the objective of the lesson was to describe text structure and organization of poetry and explore everyday objects with a poet's eye. The vocabulary words that the teacher needed to teach included verse, line, poetic license, rhythm, and rhyme. Those can be very complicated words, especially if you have a language-based disability. The teacher grouped the students heterogeneously, with one group on one side of the room and the other student on the other sides of the room. So the teachers both had the knowledge of how to teach that lesson. They were teaching the same lesson. So they had to co-plan to make sure they each understood how to teach that lesson effectively. And they both understood the instructional barriers for the students who struggled in that classroom. So, for example, in the smaller group, it became easier to prepare for and deliver things such as visual models for the vocabulary. So the students who needed it could have it so they could access the instruction alongside their peers. Sentence starters. The KWL strategy is used often in this classroom. What do I know? What do I want to know? And what did I learn? KWL. And with our learners, when we just provide those acronyms, that helps them focus on the poetry text and then engage in the instruction. Now, students with average or above-average cognitive capacity may not require that to do that learning, but it gets both students who are at very different beginning levels to the same ends level because you've removed the instructional barrier about how do I get there? And in addition, when you have a small group and you're delivering that lesson and you're working very specifically on the objective of identifying those vocabulary and using text to identify it, for those students who are above and need more challenging, you can focus in on them with your critical thinking questionings, those depth-of-knowledge questionings. Tell me, how did you know? Tell me, how did you get to that answer? Explain your reasoning out loud. Those questions that are really tripping up our children on the AP exams and college entrance exams for our gifted learners, we can focus in them early on because we have the small student-to-staff ratio. So that's an example of how parallel teaching might work. So it's the same instruction, but both of the teachers have the combinations necessary for their students, and it's a small ratio. So let's talk about station teaching. This is another very effective model of instruction that our teachers down at Cottle are working very, very actively on. So again, taking a look at the video example. In this, you can see that the students are actually at four different stations, believe it or not. You have one group of students who are working on the Chromebooks and the iReady. And the iReady is that research-based instruction where it places you at your personal level, for example, in math, and then aligns instruction with your personal level and gives you practice to further your level. So, for example, if you are two grades below and you need work on subtraction and addition, it gives you a moment to work on that instead of the common core at that moment. If you're two grades above, it gives you that instruction and allows you to further your progression while not worrying about the common core at that moment. You also see a station here where students have manipulatives. And that's that kinesthetic learning where they're learning to use manipulatives to help them solve math problems. And then, you have the two stations of Ms. Lanero and Mrs. Volpe. And you see on the backboard there where it's clearly identified which students are in which groups. So there's no loss to instruction. And again, station teaching is you have the opportunity to teach different things. That's what's key about station teaching is that you're teaching different things, but in a very intense way. And you have the ability to modify. So, for example, if Mrs. Volpe is teaching the instruction of the day about one concept, she can provide that differentiation within in a very targeted approach, and then the students switch. So there's inherent movement breaks, which we know are good for the brain. And the teachers have an awareness of how they're going to get their skills across to the students. Again, they have four or five students there. So that intensive, individualized instruction can occur. So I'm going to have some examples that our consultant really helped us work out in this COVID era. How do we do stations safely and with health protocols? So we worked very, very closely with our school nurse and our other folks that know best about how to do that with cleaning strategies and keeping safe distances and also keeping track of when students were in what groups in case any quarantining protocols needed to be implemented. So again, station teaching, you tackle those curriculum standards with a greater degree of differentiation and individuation. You progress monitor more often. You close the gaps quicker. And you can work on remediation and advancing your gifted learners. So let's do a lesson. Put this into practice. So if you have a math station for grade 4 or 5 reviewing, the objective for all is to review a number of math concepts in preparation for beginning a unit in geometry. So here's how stations will work. Independent, iReady, your own individualized math skill level. You're working on that. Independent with manipulatives. Kinesthetic. How do I see the world and manipulate it so not only do I have a calculation understanding, but I have an application understanding? The special education teacher targets subtraction with money. So how do I do subtraction using money concepts? The general education teacher targets word problem. And here's how you differentiate within. So the goal for all, subtraction with money. But the special education teacher might have visuals for her students. A quarter equals 25. Here's a quarter. Might have what's called an anchor chart for her students who may need it. So they're all practicing the concept, but it's differentiated. The students who are more advanced, no visuals. And they just have more advanced problems. And then, they're asked to apply those problems. Word problem, same thing. Students with disabilities have a very difficult time with word problems because it's language. It's language and it's application. So what do we do? We specifically teach them strategies. Circle and underline the math vocabulary word. Now, tell me what math calculation is attached to that vocabulary word. Now, step by step, here's a graph paper to keep your numbers organized. So you remove the instructional barrier so that all kids are working on the same concept. And again, my high flyers, I'm giving them a math word problem that's asking them to apply and use critical thinking. I'm throwing in a few words in there that are distraction. Can they do relevant versus irrelevant? But they're all working on the same thing. So, in conclusion, that is some of the great work we're doing so far this year to add on to some of the work that's been started at the middle school. We would like to... My plan is I'd like to now move these two models up as we go. I've got big plans here. Got a lot of work to do. And I'm very appreciative for all your support. I think it's a wonderful thing. So I will open up to questions. If you have any questions?
You want to come sit?
Sure.
That was a really, really good presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, excellent.
I'm passionate about what I do.
It's obvious.
Want to just go around? Anybody have any questions or comments or anything? Cynthia, anything?
Obviously, yeah. The presentation was very thorough. I love the integration of the videos because that really helps people understand what that looks like instead of just saying... So that was really great. I guess what I wanted to know... And maybe you've said this before, Amy. It's good to talk to them. I'm sorry. With how many classes is this currently happening? And what grade levels is it happening in?
Currently, we have integrated co-teaching in grades kindergarten through 4. And we have it in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, every subject. Math, socialized, English, and science. 6th, 7th, and 8th grade.
So not 5th?
5th grade is a consultant teacher model. And we have support in each of the academics. But the needs of the students were slightly different than they had anticipated. And so, they are able to be supported without the full ICT model.
Okay. So that was just... It was very class-dependent. But going forward, that could be implemented into 5th grade?
Depending on the needs of the students. I think it's a fabulous model. But it's always based on the needs of the students and obviously, you know, how many teachers we're allowed to have.
Well, last year, I just want to make everybody clear. Last year, we added an extra special education teacher to Cottle so we could have a teacher on every grade level. And then, we'll assess it for next year. If we might need a little bit more with the integrated co-teaching in 5th grade, you know, depending upon the students that we have because they do departmentalize. It could get tricky.
So when you say K to 4, is that every kindergarten class? Every first... Like has some portion? Okay, that's what I mean.
So the kids are grouped in that class, and there's two teachers. And what Dr. Sweeney showed is in some programs, you look at it and you can definitely tell who the general education teacher is, who's kind of the special education teacher helper. But the two models that she focused on really gives a lot of equity and provides support, and incidental support, actually, to all students in the classroom. So I think you made that really clear. Everybody gets more individualized instruction.
You have something else?
I don't. So, yeah, because I'm in that field, so I kind of get that. I just was curious to see how it's working here. And I'm excited to see, like, is the thought to bring it up to high school?
Yeah. It's very interesting. The high school students, it's a consultant teacher model. And they do very well. Graduation was... Only one student wasn't able to make that June, but then made it by the following August with a region's diploma, not even the local option. So I was very impressed with that. So that's part of my getting to know the kids in the district and what their needs are. So when I saw there was no integrated co-teaching, I was like, I wondered how they do. But it looks like they did quite well. But I'm always taking a look at what the needs of the students are.
No, I mean, I especially like the idea of the station teaching movement.
Yes.
I think all kids benefit from that in particular. So I didn't know if even the classes that don't have it, are they also getting some training on what that looks like and how they might be able to... Because you don't have to necessarily have two teachers in the room to do that. You can do station teaching. Because I've actually seen it visiting on days in both middle school and high school when I visit. And I know some teachers have used that. And I kind of like that. So I was wondering if all teachers might get that training and it be sort of a push because it gives kids an opportunity to move around and work on different skills.
Sure. Sure.
What is the teacher/consultant model? What is that?
Consultant teacher means that the special education teacher pushes into the classroom, but it can be every other day. It can be every day. But the difference is that there's not the co-planning and co-teaching required. So the consultant teacher model, the consultant teachers focus mostly on the students with special education needs and making sure their needs are getting met. Versus the co-teachers, they're truly co-teaching for all of the students.
They're not coordinated necessarily.
It's a greater amount of coordination. And at the high school, it's more difficult to do because you would have five different co-teachers. So I, I would understand why that might be more challenging. And it's such a small district, the teachers know each other so well. They naturally co-teach and co-plan uh well together. But it's, yeah, it's, it's a big commitment. Integrated co-teaching is a big commitment because there's a lot of co-teaching and there's a lot of shared responsibility required. The general education teacher has to understand the barriers. So when there's parallel teaching, the general education teacher has to understand the barriers because you want the kids in heterogeneous groupings. But you have to be able to remove the instructional barriers so that you can also teach the high learners. Right? You don't want to spend all of your time focusing on remediation. So it's, it's a, it's a partnership for sure.
Right. And that was one of my thoughts when I was watching that with the, the high learners and the gifted children that, you know, obviously they could do I-Ready and you can give them, you know, either two grades ahead or one grade ahead.
Yeah.
Um, in, in reading. But what others, so you, you group them also. So those general ed and/or maybe higher achieving children will have that opportunity, right? They rotate around and they'll have that teacher time.
Yeah.
That's what I was getting from that, right? So they all kind of rotate those different stations.
Right. So like, for example, when um the special education teacher is at a station, if her station is doing um, like with my example, um, the subtraction with money, you know, she'll have, you know, she has it planned out. So the barriers are the students need to have graph paper because they can't line the math numbers, they've got dyscalculia. That they need to have a model because they have a working memory deficits, right? And they need a visual, a quarter equals 25, they need an anchor chart. So she's got those, so they could be independent. So then she's working with her higher level learners also and saying, no, 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 we're going to 150 minus 27. Now what do we got? Now it's 20% off, what do you think? You know, so you really can get to all learners that way, which is really nice.
Differentiation is really something that I think is, is a game changer in the, obviously teachers, I, not teacher, but the good ones know how to, even not in a co-teach model, how to differentiate, right? They're like Cynthia was saying, Cynthia, they move around, have different, different parts of the classroom, might be doing different things. But one of the things that I think is just piggybacking on what Cynthia was thinking is that in the other classes, like, so, so we're talking about expert consultant, right? We did Wilson, just, I'm just trying to, from a sort of a top-down approach to that. So we brought in um a lot of teachers getting trained on it, right? So we really have made a commitment to foundations, multi-syllabic. I mean, that's totally different than, you know, I have high schoolers now, but go back, we had balanced literacy, we had one word, what's that wonder word, whatever it is. I mean, this is now really, we, this is a long, long time coming, but this is now a wonderful thing for, I think, children developing language now in this district because I think it was lacking. So this is fab, this is, I'm so excited. One of the questions I have though is that this co-teach model, I think, is going to be great for those with IEPs, right? And with have, they have needs. But the other classrooms, are we doing, I guess I, I might, are we doing foundations in all the classrooms?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. So the only difference between the co-teach is that there's a little bit more differentiation, those, those parallel and all those examples that you gave me that are not happening in the other classrooms. Am I right? Is that?
Um, well, some, good teaching is good teaching. So I can't say if teachers are using different, different strategies.
Right.
Um, but I know for sure my special education teachers are bringing those levels of expertise to the table. And making sure, for example, those students who, who have, there's barriers to them learning.
Yeah.
Right? And so they're not just sitting in a classroom and kind of, are their needs getting met? Are they not getting met? Are they making progress? Are they not getting progress? There's more eyes on them and they're re-provided the, the specially, the, the instruction specifically to make sure that we're closing those gaps. So in a regular classroom, you know, if you have, if they have a disability, they're identified with a disability, we have to respond to it. We have to react to it. We have to get in there and, and you know, really make sure we're closing those gaps. So that's, you know, that's why the, you know, the inclusion model, we can do, we can do that while they're in with their typical kids.
And I just, I just think about the kids in the other classrooms that are also struggling, right? And so, you know, so I'm thinking of my own kids back, before they were class, I mean, one of my, and so I just always go back to that. Um, I think the goal is that in every classroom, right? Does it, that teacher can identify that uh from a young age, right? We don't wait till third, fourth, and all that and then try to catch up. So that's, and I think this is great because this really does speak to starting early and really differentiating early. But I think, I, I'm excited to hear that it is happening in, in every classroom, that we are bringing it across the board. Because some other, some, some other districts I've heard and I, but you know, they might bring in a program and then this teacher's doing, it's not with fidelity, right? It's like, this one's doing it, she's going to do it her way, and then they drop it, and then the new principal comes in and it's like, oh, I don't know, I don't want to do that anymore. So I think this really, we, this is a commitment. And as a board, we really are excited to, to support that financially because this is, as you know, Dr. Goodman's background was there and your background also, that this is going to be done with that kind of commitment to all, all grades and all classrooms, not just, you know, the ones that are thankfully identified and appropriately so.
Yeah, I was going to say, because I was, the reason I was asking that training was being given in other classrooms because I think all kids benefit from like the individualization and they all have different learning styles and things like that. So that's why I was wondering how maybe the special ed teachers are maybe could work with the classrooms that don't have them as a co-teach and sort of help facilitate that even though they don't have that extra teacher in the room. Because really, all kids do benefit and they'll have different learning styles.
So what's nice about this, just to answer to some of what you're saying, first of all, the more that people learn co-teaching, they're not always a co-teacher each year. We will switch that around. So those, those methods will be shared. Also, Mr. Keough also works with the general education teachers on differentiating. And the programs that we brought in are differentiated already. So you know, like you said, I-Ready, but also foundations, you know, there's different levels. As far as kids getting support in other classes, we really do the best we can to set up the, the co-teach class so even, so it's even, but it's not only just special education kids, kids who struggle in other ways, you know, are, could also get support in those classes.
So do you have to have a certain ratio in a co-teach classroom for special ed to gen ed?
Yes.
And so what if like one year you have more than one classroom worth? Like, how are we going to deal with that?
So the ICT ratio on the IEPs, it's listed as a 12:1. So there can be no more than 12 students with IEPs in the classroom. And the, the state recommends that you don't go over the 50% ratio. So you can't have like 12 students with IEPs in a classroom of 50. Right? You can sit, so you can't say, oh, well, we're, we're under 12, right? We only have 12 or 11, but then there's 15 kids in the class. So you're over that 50% ratio.
Well, you even think like 12 to 18, because then it's like two-thirds of your class. Like statistically, that's significant.
Right, exactly. So we do try to, to stay under those at, at all possible. So um, if you have more than 12 students, you can, you, you have to create another classroom. You have to create another section. You have, you can't have more than 12 because that, that wouldn't be effective. Like just what you're talking about, like if you're going to implement something, implement it with fidelity. So if you have 12 students to get their needs met, that's not as effective as if you can have, you know, eight or seven or, you know, you want to get those numbers as, as best you can.
I guess I also worry about kids who maybe aren't fully classified, but like we're saying would benefit, like maybe they're just there, do you know what I mean? And I think because I'm a parent of a kid who struggled for years and wasn't formally classified but needed it. Do you know what I mean? So maybe she wouldn't be put in that ICT classroom, but really would benefit from that type of instruction and that level of attention, but is put in another classroom because she doesn't quite qualify. So that, I think, is my concern, listening to this. Like, I think this is awesome and I'm, I'm really excited about it too. And again, my daughter is gone, but I think for our district as a whole, this is going to strengthen our foundation for all of our kids and it's awesome. I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, like Laura was saying, we're doing it with full fidelity, we're all the way in, we're not going to have like, this is our way. And it's not going to be, well, this is our way while John Marash is principal or, but Linehan or whomever, right? That's number one. And number two, that we're able to really develop all of our teachers with these skills so that kids who maybe aren't classified properly, appropriately yet, whatever, or just missing the mark to be classified, are still benefiting from this model.
Right. And there are, just so that you know, it's not just this model, there's, we hired a new interventionist at Cottle who's doing a lot of support for the other, for kids that maybe aren't in this class or need this kind of intensity. They are getting, um, they are getting intense instruction too.
So that's more like an AIS support.
Yeah, that's like an AIS, but we never had, yeah, exactly. But she's very focused, um, great teacher, actually. Very exciting.
I, I just want to, that's.
And we also have flexibility. I mean, we don't like to change classes and change things up, but let's say, you know, we made a mistake somewhere, we could, yeah.
I mean, I think to, to, Teres is, just maybe think when she was asked that question and sort of a little bit what I was alluding to before, which is um, early, early identification, right? And so I think not just us, but just in general education, sort of lets it go along, go, you know, I think you can identify with the proper tools, right? So it's kind of like anything with data or anything that you're working on, it's garbage and garbage, all right? So if I'm not using a good tool, if I'm using a tool that's going to sway it a certain way, so I think this interventionist or the person that's doing the, early on, so if somebody comes to us in kindergarten or pre-K even, right? Now we're doing pre-K and kindergarten, we have this golden opportunity. And again, goes back to what do we, how are we identifying them? And then we do identify them early on and we're doing multi-syllabic and we're doing foundations and doing it in K, pre-K, K. We really shouldn't have the problem, right? There's a kid in third grade that's jazz borderline because you know, we kind of caught it over here, right?
Yeah, you've known about it.
And I think that, you know, when you look at these private schools, that people spend a fortune to send a kid, you know, it's because of small size, are they really, each kid's really looked at, you know, and, and so I, my long-winded question is what are we using as that tool? And I'd be curious, I mean, I know this is not the topic, I appreciate my, you know, my questions.
Mr. Keough, do you want to come?
But what, what do we use right now to pick screen and pick up on those?
I'm going to have, Mr. Keough, would you like to come join us?
Oh, sure.
Since you're here today.
Perhaps. They can just, share one microphone.
And not that I'm qualified to know whether it's good or not, I'm just curious.
This is really a special ed presentation, but I don't want to ask. So um, can you talk about how, what tool we're using to assess kids at Cottle?
Uh, well, for benchmark assessment, we use I-Ready.
We stopped STAR, right? So now we're I-Ready?
Correct. I-Ready is our mean benchmarking tool, uh, which is nationally normed. It looks at math and reading, looks at percentiles, looks at grade levels, uh, and looks at growth. So that would be our first, you know, kind of blanket indicator. But then beyond that, we have things like running records and DIBELS. If we're concerned about kids, we have a, you know, an inventory of different things that we can pull from.
And is that on a pre-K K level too? DIBELS, I don't know.
Uh, at the K level, I'm not sure if they use it at the K level, but it is one of the tools that we have available.
Yeah, yeah. So everybody basically has a baseline.
Yes.
Essentially.
We have a baseline and then that baseline can like lead us to other tools if we need to. The IST looks at cases of kids who get flagged either by I-Ready, usually I-Ready just confirms things that we've seen in other ways. Um, and then from there, we might say, all right, let's try this, let's try that, let's try this, and we have those this and that's available.
And, and is that first, is it just one person that's like, or are we, are we, as a teacher and the interventionist and the, because one of the things too is that we don't want, that I found in the past is that we have sort of had a gatekeeper, right? We had one person that was sort of looking at all kids. And not to say that that person may or may not, but I think sort of that intrarate reliability, right? If I have three people kind of giving me three different tests. Is that, you know, we can, I'm just curious, is that kind of how it goes?
It's a T-model. So there would be maybe five or six members of the team. It would include, uh, depending on the case, you could include a reading specialist, you could include uh an E and L specialist, a speech therapist, but then I'll have a general education teacher, a special education teacher, and then an interventionist.
That's great, yeah.
And this administrator.
And it would be, it would be great to see, and I probably won't be here when you see this, but in three, four years from now, if you take that data that we look, look at the kids in the past, when we picked them up, how many, you know, look at that. And now that we're doing this, when are we picking them up? Was in early intervention, are numbers up or down? And sort of just our overall literacy number should, you can't imagine they wouldn't go up.
I was just looking at the, you know, the video that you showed and the one that Mr. Marash showed last year. I mean, foundations was a big game changer and the teachers have hooked onto it. And you can see, those of you who know special education, it really is the way to teach reading to all students. It's not just special education, but that is why some people look to other programs because their child did not get that foundational, foundational skills.
Yeah, yeah, that's so true.
And you mentioned fidelity to the foundations language in the early grades. Everyone's speaking the same language, we're all speaking about the same skills, we're all, they're all being taught. So it's really kind of enhanced the conversations we're having around reading and early education.
And we have leaders in that. So I know you're training, currently training teachers right now are going, how many, how many would you say are getting the Wilson trained on our staff?
There's eight teachers.
Eight teachers in Cottle?
Yes.
That's fabulous. Anybody in middle school, high school, I guess? Is it, do we do Wilson in the middle school, high school?
You, you can do Wilson in the middle school, high school.
Yeah, they do. There was one teacher who was at the middle school, but then she ended up going back down to Cottle. So everyone at the middle school has already been trained.
Wilson.
So, um, Dr. Sweeney, sorry. There, so the middle school, high school has already been trained in Wilson. Is that what you just said? No. What did you say?
The question was, can you do, I thought the question was, can you do it in the middle school?
That was my question.
Oh, I thought you said that she went, that they went down to Cottle because they've already been trained in the middle school.
That's the integrated co-teaching.
Oh, sorry.
There.
Sorry.
And she's going to, and Dr. Sweeney is going to go back up and focus on those two points of what we're, the Takahoe way of our co-teaching. So it will be brought up to middle school next.
Okay.
Because think of those kids that are in middle school that didn't have this.
That's what I was, yeah.
Or that come, transfer in.
And some of the teachers in the middle school are, are Wilson-trained already because they've come from, or PAF from Windward. And we have, and some of them are a reading teacher by, you know, before they started teaching here. So we do, we are very focused on reading also in the middle school. But we will bring, we can bring Wilson up there too.
And the, and the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade have integrated co-teaching for every subject, for all three grades, which is fabulous.
Great, and then they have the skills at the end of the day to reaffirm.
Yeah, it's a great program really.
And they, and they pull out reading if they need.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a very rich program in the middle school.
And just what you just mentioned, pulling out, so if I, if there's an IP where there's a special class, right? Where that was my daughter, she would have to go and group and read. Is that, is that, do you still do that in Cottle? Even with co-teach? So there might be a group that's still getting special instruction reading?
Yes.
You have to have that pyramid. So sometimes even in the middle school, you'll also see like kids could have a special class for ELA, but be in a co-taught class for social studies, science. You have to have the flexibility.
Right, which is great. And building on that. And I think it's great and it's a testament to our, our staff. Eight, that's a lot, I mean, we're a small district, I think that's a lot of in, in Cottle, right? And they're, it's outside their.
Yeah, they're doing great.
Because I had looked into it.
And it's intensive.
It's very intensive.
That I was going to go to Wilson-trained and I was like, oh, no.
And they're doing this really on their own, they're very, very, very dedicated. Our teachers doing this. I'm, I'm really proud of them. It's very hard.
How many hours is it to get trained?
180.
It's 180.
180.
Outside of their hours.
Oh, 80 or eight?
80.
Apparently I can't hear.
And then, and then you have to also pass a test, I mean, it's great, there's practice on, so I looked into it. And not being a teacher, I realize this is not going to be good.
You have to get observed by a person, you have to get feedback, you have to pass an observation.
Which is why when, you know, we loosely use Wilson in the past. I mean, when I was sort of learning all this stuff as a parent of trying to understand what's going on and, and so I threw myself into it, trying to understand it and realize I give homage to those that do it. Um, but I, you know, people say, oh, but we do Wilson. No, not really. Do you know what I mean? Like a weekend class is not, I'm just, I'm trying to say that this is a very different.
Very beginning Wilson class, that's not, and that's what a lot of the school districts, I don't know if here, like they go to that four day or whatever that is, and they say, well, Wilson-trained, well, kind of. This is much more intensive.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, so this is great.
Excellent.
Thank you, Kayla. Dr. Sweeney was great.
Yeah, no, be welcome. Thanks for having me.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Really good stuff. Once again, excellent presentation. Really, really well done.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Keough.
More videos, we love videos. Because we don't get to say.